...to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of Washington. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're meeting with public comment. Is there any public comment?
Normally I would get on the agenda for this. I apologize for that lateness of this. We've talked about it before, about getting a grant for doing skilled home health through public health. And so I did write a grant for that. Wasn't sure if I was going to get it. The money that was, that I wrote for was a year-end carryover allocation from Rocky Mountain Development Council. And so we were awarded $2,941. That grant does require a 15% match, which would be $519. So we can, next year then, we can actually, in July, we can apply for that, the full grant, and then we can actually get more money to do skilled services through our department. So I bring this to you to see if you agree to the 15% match on this carryover money. We can do things like, you know, just check up on people who are getting discharged from the hospital that need to have vital signs, wound care, medication setups, and teaching, and stuff like that, which I think that would be a huge asset to our seniors in our county. And since we probably are not going to need the money for the billing company at this point, they did not get back to me in time for that to work out. And so that was $1,100. So we can maybe just take that money and put that from the Nurse General Fund to make this match work. So just need your blessing on that. So she, when this money comes through as carryover money at the end of the year, they very quickly have to get their budgets done. And so I found out about this late on Wednesday, before the holiday, and she wants the budget like ASAP today. And so that's why I come this morning to make sure it's okay with you guys that we do a county match on that carryover money for home health.
Mr. Chair, if I may, that money is already in Melissa's budget. So the only thing we need to do is when the grant comes in, have that go through the public process. But as far as authorizing that match, that's already in her budget. And just because nobody has a crystal ball. So I would say yes. No, I don't think it's appropriate for us, this is just public comment. And we don't have to make a motion because we're not changing anything. We do have to make a motion when the grant comes through for signature.
I assume that what will happen, the same with the respite grant, because we ended up getting that as carryover the first time, and then we applied for it this year and got it. They'll send a task order, just like the rest of my grants, that tell me what's required of me to send to the state and everything. But she, you know, they need to wrap up their year-end budget. So they need a budget from me that says, you know, how much I'm going to spend in wages and supplies and stuff like that. And she kind of wanted it, like, today, if she could get it. So that's why I came this morning. But she'll send a task order, and then I'll bring that to the commission as well. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. I think it would be good, though, for the record, to make sure that at least two of us are a yes for the process.
We are.
Okay.
Any other public comment? So we can go to a certificate of survey review. Do you have that?
If you don't, we're going to wait.
You don't? Okay. So we'll go to the 10 o'clock, Nicole Brown, Community Development Director, County Board Appointment Process.
Before we get on that, I wanted to introduce you to the newest Administrative Assistant to the Environmental Health and Community Development Office, and also the Commissioners. So this is Helen Corn. I asked her to come down this morning just to kind of see the process.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you.
So regarding boards, I'm not bringing forward any appointments today. I simply want to discuss the process of board appointments. And I have a memo that was put together by the Commission in 2018. And you have these.
Yeah, thanks.
Basically, just with bullet points on this process. And I want to know if this is the process you want to continue to follow. I'm sorry, I'm throwing documents at you. And the second sheet here is the vacancies that we currently have on boards. And by vacancies, those are terms expiring. So we have received a considerable amount of feedback from the board managers. I reached out to all of them beginning of November and let them know which members had expiring terms. I've gotten well over 50% letters of interest from those board members, either wishing to stay, a couple of them wanting to be released. So the way I put this kind of quick list together is just to show you expiring terms, but that also means maybe some vacancies. And so today, I'm really just looking for instruction and to have a dialogue on the process. Are we going to continue to follow this process that was put together in 18? And actually, you know, it's actually, it's called the Broadwater County Board Membership Practice. Are we going to continue following this? There's no, how do I want to say this? According to this practice, there's no vetting of any existing board member by their board. So I'm going to use the planning board. So we have, we have a few board members with expiring terms on the planning board. Do you want me to present that to the planning board themselves to determine if they want this or these individuals to stay? And then I will bring that to the commission. Or do you want to eliminate that or not follow that process? It's not listed here on this memo. But it is something that we have done in the past.
The idea with that was to give the board members a voice, and have them have an opinion. Of course, the final decision lies with the Commissioners. I think we continued it last year, but it wasn't in our process, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So do we want to make it an official part of our process, or do we want to just continue to do it in practice?
I think make it an official part of our practice, so that everybody knows that that's how we're doing it.
I agree with that.
Yep. So we can add that as a bullet, then?
So on these boards, why do we have four planning members and four solid waste members?
A lot of times, you know, when I come in here every year, and new members get one year, if, say, a three-year member decides to leave early, the new member coming in only gets one year. And so we try to stagger those terms, but sometimes it just doesn't happen. Like, on the solid waste board, one of them is a vacancy that has not been filled. So there really would have just been three expiring terms, but one is a vacancy. And the planning board, the same. We had two first-year members, because we had two members leave last year. And so we had two first-year members last year, and then we had two three-year members last year. I'm sorry, but terms expiring this year.
So when we reappoint these people that are first, if we reappoint these people that are first-year members, can we give one of them a two-year term and one of them a three-year term, so that we're not continually changing four people on these boards?
Yes. And that's what I try to do every year, you know, is look at staggering those terms. And yeah, I will continue to do that. When I bring forward the list to you generally at the end of December, beginning of January, that says, you know, these are my recommendations of their terms. It has nothing to do with the person. It's simply looking at staggering the terms.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand the process of appointing people to a one-year term to see if it works out. But it really does mess up the three-year, it really messes up the three-year term. Because if a term is up in three years, and you put somebody in for one, then you've got, somebody's got to remember that two years has to be filled out. If people were appointed for a three-year term when they come up, or if it's filling out a term, appointed to fill out that term, I think this would be far less complicated, in my opinion.
Thank you.
To Anne's point, the different positions on a lot of the different boards come from different areas or different areas of expertise. If we did have a cycle for that seat versus that individual, we'd be able to perhaps make this simpler and maintain having just two or three people, changing not four. Might be something to look into.
Would most of these people that you have, that apply to these boards, would they have any hesitancy if that was a three-year term versus a one-year term?
Not necessarily. And I think because they all have the ability to leave early if they choose, you know, they're not bound to that.
Right.
And not that I, I do think it's a good idea to have renewing board members and actually any new applicants to be vetted by each board. That's just going to take a little more time. Because I don't know how many boards are actually going to be meeting before the end of December.
You worked with managers about communication via email on that question, too.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I believe, you know, that's something that should be done via email, because it is, it can be a sensitive topic. It's not really something that you want to take a vote in a public meeting. If everybody wants John Smith to stay on the board, raise your hand, yes or no. It really is something that the manager can email, I believe, can email their board members and say, these are the list of applicants. Do you approve? I mean, is that, I guess I should pose that more as a question than a statement. Is that a violation of open meeting laws?
I don't believe it would be, because I think it'd fall under the ministerial portion of open meeting laws. Yeah, why unnecessarily, one, embarrass somebody that doesn't need to be embarrassed, violate their rights to privacy, which is a constitutional right? And three, would you get an accurate response? And who are we serving here? We're serving 6,000 people in Broadwater County. So I think when you look at it that way, yeah, there's ability to communicate via email without violating any open meeting laws when it, when it falls under ministerial. And then the final decision is all brought forward anyway, for a vote. So nobody has violated anything, because the public has had full view of all the information that we're making the final decision on. Yeah.
All right. Well, that answered all of my questions. Do you have any other questions or instructions for me regarding this process?
I do. One of the things that we did last year is we had Andy Hunthausen, who is a Commissioner from Lewson-Clark County, come and do a training in January for our board members. We adopted their board processes and template for how the process works. And one of those pieces is term limits. Lewson-Clark has a two-term limit for board positions. We don't have nearly the people to choose from. The Lewson-Clark County did, so it's more loose. But I think, do we want, we will try and follow term limits, with the idea being, if somebody's interested, absolutely, we welcome them aboard. But if we continue for years and years and years with the same board, and there's other people who are interested who could bring forth new ideas, or ideas that hadn't been thought of before, should we open the doors and allow for new folks? And someday, we're going to have, if we don't allow for any new people, when we do have a need for new folks, they're not going to be willing to step up. So do we want to add that as a bullet, that we will try and adhere to term limits, with the understanding that we understand if there are no other applicants or people who are qualified, that we will maintain as best we can? I don't know what the wording would be. What's your thoughts on that? And Nicole, your thoughts are more than welcome on that, too.
I'm trying to think, you know, last year, and this kind of relates to a question I want to ask later, is we did our board training, and we kind of had a, developed a little package, and handed out to everybody. I'm trying to remember if that was in there. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't know that for sure, but...
I recall it being there.
I kind of remember that, I remember that being in there.
And it was six years. And so they did term, you know, two term limits, but all of their terms were three years. And so with that being said, if we're going to do two term limits, we should look at making every term three years, because it would not be fair to someone to have, generally, our general practice has been, a first-year member gets a one-year term. Their second year, they get two years. Every third, fourth, fifth, 10th year on, it's a three-year term. Well, it wouldn't be fair to someone, their first and second year, they only get, or their first and second term, they only get three years. Whereas someone else, if we start this, they will get six.
Right.
And I shouldn't say fair. I appreciate all of our volunteers. I know it's a thankless job, so maybe fair isn't the best word. But, you know, if we do look at term limits, we really should look at doing three-year terms only.
Or a number of years.
Right. Or a number of years, and not do term limits, and say, six years max.
Yeah. Unless there's no one else interested. Because I think that's important, because of our size. We're growing, but we still don't have nearly the same pool of people.
To where you could give preference to someone, you know, if you have, if you have two expiring terms and three applicants, you could give preference to that.
So I guess I'd like to look at what our language is in that person, in, kind of test it along his lines.
Sure. But maybe, maybe following that process and adding a bullet?
Sure.
Okay. Since we'll be changing this, this is probably the time to throw out any additions.
So in the meantime, just because I want this to keep, this process to keep going, if we do add this to the next agenda, to clean this up a bit, and then also look at those, the board bylaws that you adopted. But I'm still, in the background, going to be working with board managers and advertising, because that is, that's already part of our process, advertising as widely as possible for all of these positions.
Yes. And a request that was made last year is to have a short paragraph describing what the boards do?
Yes.
Are you including that, too, in your advertising?
I certainly can.
Okay. That would be great. Their responsibilities, but also their opportunities.
Yeah. Last year, I requested that, because I don't know, you know, I'm involved with two, three of these boards, but I don't know the functionality of each of these boards. And so I can make that request to the board managers, to send me just, you know, four sentences or more. But if I don't get a response, I'm not going to hold off advertising.
Perfect. If you don't get a response, will you let us know, so that we can maybe fill that in, so that there isn't a blank?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So the question I was going to ask, Allison contacted me and said that she's received a lot of responsible folks that liked our training last year, our board training, and would like to have it again. So I guess after the first of the year, after we get our boards organized, if you guys would like to do that again, I think it'd be a good idea.
I think it would be, too.
I agree. I think, I'd like to see it annual. Yeah.
Do you think that we would be more inclined to get more people if we moved this thing back to, instead of trying to have all of these boards get members in December, have them get members in January, and present the board in February? Because we run into this holiday window of nothing gets accomplished, without it all being helter-skelter. To put it into January, so that people have the time to get everything together, and then present them in February, instead of trying to get them going in January.
I see what you're saying. But also, some of these members, their terms expire, well, they do expire, the ones that are expiring, December 31st.
Okay.
So if there was a board that was to meet in January, I can't speak legally, because I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV, but I would say that that member couldn't vote, because they've not been renewed officially by this board. But I do understand what you're saying with the holidays. And so, you know, my, I thought I was getting a jumpstart in starting this in November. Maybe in 2020, I need to start in October 1st.
Well, and if we go back in time, when it used to start July 1st, you had the same issues in the spring. There's just no good time. No good time. Everybody's always busy. So we changed it, because most citizens go by the calendar year. It's just government that goes by the funny months to create a year. We thought it'd be easier.
It sounds like you've got a lot of response already, so...
Over 50%.
Yeah.
And not, but I have not advertised yet. So this is only the feedback that I've received from members that want to continue their terms. And like I said, there's two of them that wish to step down. So, you know, I can advertise, I'll start advertising today. I can send something off to the paper, you know, just real brief. These are the boards that were, I won't make it this lengthy, but these are the boards that are looking for positions. I don't think that we need to list how many positions, because I don't want that to eliminate anyone wanting to apply, if you will.
I agree.
And if, you know, the public knows of folks, or, you know, somebody that might be perfect for the, for the job, I think that's always good, sometimes to encourage folks to apply. All right?
Excellent.
I see that. Thank you.
Mike, I have a question, Nicole.
Yes.
Just looking at the calendar, do you guys have enough weeks, meetings in December, to finalize this with advertising?
I think we will.
Okay.
I'm off to the stick.
Just so they, they will know if they're still on a board or...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think if we make this the very last, I mean, I'm going to push it off to the very last possible meeting, for sure, because I want to get as many applicants as possible. But, you know, we have an entire month. If someone has an interest in serving, they already know that they have an interest in serving, or they've already got an, I hope.
Go to 1015 Silos Recreation Area Operations Options Opportunities Bureau of Reclamation concessionaire contract letters.
Mike, do you have a copy of the letter I sent this morning? Here's, just short, sweet, and to the point.
Did you get a copy of this, Mike?
I did, yes.
I found two edits. First one is on line two, "An opportunity to update THE current contract." And then the second paragraph of paragraph two, starting in the middle, "being done by JSJ, Inc., on behalf of Broadwater County." So if we can agree or vote to send this letter, I would request that we just make those two changes. And then sign, we can sign after the meeting. And I would move that we proceed, as we discussed in our working meeting last week, and sign the letter to Sharon, to reopen the contract for revisions and updates.
And this is, this is the concessionaire contract with JSJ, not the county concessionaire contract with the Bureau of Reclamation?
This is, yes. I think we should do both. But this one would be just this, and then the other one would be a separate, separate action.
Is there a second, then?
Yeah, I'll second that. I got the second process we need to get going as soon as possible.
Okay. So I guess for discussion, I think, you know, the meeting that we had with Sharon the other day was, was quite an eye-opener, really, because if you, if you go through the contract, and you talk to them about what they do do, the stuff that the county lacks in doing, simply because it's, it's not really, our crews are a lot busier than they have to go to maintain a campground. But she does a lot of work out there that's, in reality, is required by the county. I think that we need, and when we discuss some things about different payouts and stuff, with certain things that I think will be beneficial to both her and to the camp area, and hopefully, that area, all of our repairs are done, so we don't have to spend so much money maintaining that place. The bottom line, I think, when we reopen this contract, is that in some way, that facility has to become self-supporting, so we're not putting our money into it. Which, you know, we put some money into it this last year, but we had some repairs that were not done, that just basically built up because of the wind. So I'm hoping that we won't have to do that again. We talked about some ideas to redo that. I would hope most of that stuff would go forward.
See, I agree, Mike. I mean, the fund does need to support itself, and hopefully, we can put some money into CIP to make those repairs that need to be made there. So I think that's, that's the goal of doing this.
I agree as well. And what was most valuable for me was talking about how to solidify our partnerships, and making sure that we're all moving forward on the same road with the same, same vision.
So is there any other further discussion? So the motion is to send the letter, and can you go on with reopening this contract? Is there any further discussion? any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both saying, motion carries. So we will correct the two grammatical errors and mail this letter to Sharon.
Sounds good.
Okay. Yes.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, Tim Redup needs, will this letter that goes out to Sharon regarding the renewal of the contract for the concessionaire, is that exclusively to Sharon or as earlier stated in these meetings, that contract was going to be open to the possibility of other concessionaire interests to step up and maybe offer different views or different opportunities? That's just a question, is if it's going to go out public or if it's going to be pretty much an internal housekeeping business?
No, I would think that this letter is addressed to Sharon. I would almost think that after we got done discussing exactly, you know, what the, whether or not we're gonna reopen this current contract or whether we're gonna change the contract and then open that contract, would depend on these discussions that we have about the contract. I believe that that contract is a 10-year contract, is it not?
I think so.
It can, it can be.
Could be, I don't think.
It can be terminated and then re-advertised, but you have to do it in a certain timeframe.
I don't think it has an expiration, but I'm just speaking from memory. Yeah.
I guess my thoughts is that power of the negotiations end up will determine whether we, you know, if there's an agreement, and if there's not an agreement, then it won't probably pass for someone else.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Again, just for clarification, because there had been discussions about reopening the contract to wide open, which the discussion also went that because it is on VOR land, that goes nationally, and there's a process that has to be followed in order to make that under the process. So that's, I just wanted a clarification for that purpose. Thank you.
Okay, so let's see, our next one is 10:45. We have some mail here. We have the minutes from November 25th, 2019.
Motion for the second amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion to debate second approved minutes from November 25th, 2019. Is permitted, all in favor?
Aye.
Both saying, motion carries. We have approved claim list in the amount of $39,773.69.
I move approved, paid approved claims of $39,773.69.
No, second, I'm opposed.
Motion to debate second to pay claims, set them on, ready for the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both saying, motion carries. Had a holiday greetings card here from the Great West Engineering folks in Allen. Let's see for the mail, see, do we wanna take care of that? A letter to the mental health, local mental health advisory council?
Sure. Do you wanna give us kind of a short overview of what we're applying for from this grant?
We're applying for the Mobile Crisis Unit Grant, and there's a lot of requirements on it, and one of them is for the commissioners, we need the support of it, that you have agreed to support me and the funding to match the grant, kind of is what I'm gathering at. I've already started kind of on this next process with this grant, not even realizing it with this job of what my vision of was for. So this is basically what we're just needing for that, and our deadline is tomorrow at 2:00, so we're kind of like at the crunch time of this.
Right.
I would've never thought that I'd be here today doing this kind of stuff.
Sure. I'll go ahead and read the letter. It says to, I'm concerned, "It was great pleasure we write a letter of support for the mobile crisis grant being applied for by our mental health local advisory council. Our local advisory council provides an invaluable service to our community and for members of our community that are faced with a mental health crisis. When a face-to-face interaction is warranted, our peer-to-peer staff works with individuals who successfully resolve the crisis in a safe, comfortable, respectful manner. In many instances, the mobile crisis team in a rapid response, assessment, and intervention prevents the arrest of individuals in crisis and also from them being placed into custody and the justice system. Another objective of the mobile crisis team is to help divert people in crisis from the psychiatric care unit or hospital. Our current program also provides a link to people searching for the needed behavioral health services. As the ongoing demand for crisis care is occurring, the Broadwater County Board of, County Commissioners fully supports the efforts of the local advisory council as they seek the mobile crisis grant funding. The Board of Commissioners has set aside funds and has also committed to matching available grant funds for the continued operation and success of this valuable program."
I'll move that we sign the support letter for the Mobile Crisis Unit Grant. It's an awesome program.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion to debate second approval letter to send, all in favor?
Aye.
Both saying, motion carries.
And it's kind of the same thing with Teresa's grant. The support letter isn't necessarily required to vote on. What we'll have to vote on is acceptance of the grant when it comes in. And then that'll have to be on the agenda. Thank you.
You're gonna take that with you then, while it's a day.
Okay. Take it over to them.
Okay. If we can make a copy of that before. So do we have a copy of it for our records then as well, please? Thank you.
And go to our 1045 Raidersburg Historic Preservation Society tax fund request.
I think so. So to complement what Deb just gave you, I reached out to Roz at Department of Revenue a couple of weeks ago, last week, I don't remember the day, and she put me to, or sent me to Linda Sather, Department of Revenue. Linda is the person who does most of the compliance for nonprofits. And what happened this past year, last year, was in 2019, the legislature passed, I think it was House Bill 389. And what that did is it, its intent was to close some loopholes that 501(c)(3) s and nonprofits were using to avoid taxes. Your bigger agencies, your bigger nonprofits have tax attorneys or attorneys or accountants on their boards who saw this particular statute and were able to make the changes for their boards. What happened in your smaller counties is a number of nonprofits didn't realize that this law was passed, didn't realize how it affected them, and got caught in this law, kind of unintended consequences, if you will. So that's what has happened to the Raidersburg Historical Preservation Society. So I asked Linda, I said, "What are other small counties doing?" She said, "This has gone on all over the state. You guys are not alone." She said, "What a lot of commissions are doing is they are passing resolutions to forgive the taxes for one year based on they missed the deadline." She said, "What paperwork is required for the next year is articles of incorporation, deed, IRS letter recognizing them as a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c) something, there's four, six, nine, I'm not sure how many others, and the official request to have those property taxes forgiven in the future based on the fact that they are a qualified 501(c) whatever." So Deb has in front of you Darrell, all the required information, I understand. This was presented, it just didn't make it to the desk at Department of Revenue. So what we can do for this next year is work with Linda, make sure this is all what's required, get it to Department of Revenue by March, and we should be able to get a confirmation number next, or confirmation letter next year exempting the Raidersburg Historical Preservation Society from taxes in the future. Department of Revenue is the only one that can cancel taxes or give that long-term relief. As far as a one-year relief, that is what we can do for this year. And again, she suggested instead of getting into the weeds, just do it based on a deadline was missed. You don't have to do anything more detailed than that, she said. So I think that's all my update, unless you guys have any questions or you guys have questions.
Okay, so once all this is filed, then we don't have to do this yearly?
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, the taxes are due now, so that's where we come in, giving the taxes for this one year, based on the fact that they comply, but the deadline was missed. So my suggestion would be that we put it on the agenda next week with a resolution. I highlighted what needed to be changed on that one.
Sure.
And.
And I think also we weren't quite sure what they, what they were claiming their exemption under, and that's that paperwork's in there for the nonprofit, charity, and the museum and that stuff, right?
Right, and we have sent that into the Department of Revenue.
Right.
So it's gone.
And what we'll do is follow up with Linda and make sure that she doesn't have any boxes unchecked. And that way, there will be no surprises next year that she go through without any, any hiccups.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So does this take care of, so our 2018, the first year we were ever taxed was 2018 and now 2019.
Okay, so it would be the two years that you'd be requesting.
We started it last year and thought it was taken care of. And we have a recording to that effect, but.
So did you pay it for 18? No, okay, so what you're looking for is just forgiveness for the two years? Okay.
And forever.
Right.
Forever?
Forever.
How do I do that? I think the only question that I would have is the solid waste portion of that, how do we deal with that? That's on that tax bill.
Yeah, and I don't know what that answer would be, but that would be something to, probably Linda is the expert on that and how fees if they're forgiven. I don't know.
Our solid waste, the long time we have it, is when we have our monthly meeting, which is very little, and then during our events, like our Raidersburg Day and stuff like that. So usually one of the members take that in to the, down the garbage, however that comes out.
Okay.
But we also pay solid waste on a mobile home that we don't use either, so, but we do pay those taxes.
Is that through the, through the historical society also?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we gotta, and we pay those taxes and have that solid waste, and we do pay those taxes.
Do, what, do you use that mobile home, is there someone living in that, or are you just, what do you, do you use it for your meetings, or?
No, it was donated to the organization thinking that we could use it in the rental, and that would be income to help us pay our insurance and tax, or not taxes, a power bill and stuff like that. So, and it's just an old.
We're selling the trailer, and we'll just have a piece of land.
Folks out there helping us out, but I would burn more than helping us out, so.
So if you sell the trailer, then you won't have an assessment on it for solid waste, right?
Well, we still have the land.
But I think the assessments on the.
On the building itself. We're okay to pay the solid waste, we just.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that at all. Our roof sinks out.
We'll get an answer though for you on that, so at least you know what that answer is and why.
I would think that you could just set that up as a nonprofit business, like a business account. You would just have a card that you use for solid waste, but it would just be charged to your business. It would just be like I pay a fee for my business, that's the same thing that you would do with that. I think Mary could figure something out of a way to do that. So do we wanna put this on the agenda for the next meeting now?
I do. I think we need to redo that resolution. I don't have one in electronic copy that I could find. That one is for Crockerick, because we never did, because it was not turned in, we didn't get a letter back from Department of Revenue. So, not back for this. So if we can just make the changes to the resolution, put on a public hearing for next meeting, address this for 18 and 19, and get it taken care of. That's what I would like to do.
Sure, yeah, no, let's do that.
Okay.
Get that fixed up, because then, because Doug, he's kind of, he's kind of waiting for you for this process to happen, so.
So what is the status of Toston Crocker Community Center?
That's kind of a different situation, isn't it?
It is. It's very different.
Yeah.
The two were kind of treated as the same, but they really are two different monsters. They were denied based on the fact that they don't qualify for the exemption. The reason they don't qualify for the exemption is the exemption requires, you guys qualify because you've used the property, it's required that the property is used, or the property is on the verge of being condemned or condemned, certainly falling down. So what I would like to propose is that we work with those folks on a plan. We need a plan for what they're going to do with the property, give them some time to work it through, so perhaps forgiving the taxes as we are with Raidersburg, but with a deadline that this plan will be implemented, whatever it is going to be. But without, without qualifying for the exemption, it kind of ties our hands unless there's.
So they need to go through all this paperwork?
Exactly.
And get certified the right way.
And show they're using the property. And that's the trick with them with that statute. Or maybe there's another statute too. I don't know. But that one in particular, the one they applied under, requires use of the property.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we will have this on the agenda for the 16th?
Thank you both.
Is there a time or?
We generally do 1015 without work to hold to our usual time for public hearings?
Yeah, it should work.
Okay.
And you said, what day?
The 16th.
Oh, up to December.
Could we do it next week, though? Today's the second, we don't have the ninth?
Yeah, don't we have May or training next week?
Oh.
We do.
And it starts Monday morning?
It starts Monday morning.
I don't know, I have it on the agenda.
Okay. 16th then. I'm good with that.
The 23rd is right before the 25th, on December.
And the 24th.
I know. Okay, so you guys are still waiting?
The 23rd?
The 23rd would be better, I have a work date on the 16th.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Okay. Is that gonna cause an issue for Doug, waiting another couple of weeks? What I'm wondering is, would we want to plan a meeting for this, say like the 12th to 13th of September, of December, sorry, so the. 13th of September, of December, sorry, so the, like the Friday, the 13th, before the training, or the 12th in the afternoon?
Either one of those days are good with me.
Like four o'clock on that Thursday after our department head?
On the 12th?
Training, yeah.
True.
Would that work for you guys, late in the afternoon on the 12th?
Okay.
Doesn't put you out?
No, I'm good there.
Okay.
So, late in the afternoon time?
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock. Okay, so here?
Yes.
Okay.
And if this room is used, we'll let you know, it might be our office upstairs. I don't remember what, what, Thursdays this is used for driver's examiner, I don't remember which ones. Do you guys?
I don't think so.
Okay.
The first and second period, the first and the third?
First and thirds, that would be the second, we should be good, should be here.
Okay.
Thanks you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
That's the end of our agenda, is there anything else?
So do I understand there won't be a commissioner meeting Monday, right?
No.
Okay. I did want to talk about department head meetings.
What?
Department head meetings.
Oh, yeah.
I received an email last week about a potential change, I responded we need to talk about it, so my request is let's talk about some options. What I did is I printed a couple of pages from Jim Nice, so Jim Nice was an HR expert we worked with years ago. He is who Michelle Edmonds, our current HR, bought her practice from, we staff, that was Jim Nice. So he helped us at a very difficult time with a very difficult situation. But what you have in front of you is just a couple of pages, I didn't print the whole thing, but you're welcome to it if you want it. But the first page, you'll notice at the bottom is exceptions to open meeting laws. What the, the, well, basically, there's three exceptions, and you have them in a little bit more wording than we usually get, but usually it's defined as legal strategy, personnel that would violate the rights to privacy, and ministerial. Ministerial, if you look on Black's Law Dictionary, defines ministerial as that which is done under the authority of a supervisor, not judicial, which involves obedience to instructions, and it's defined by Jim Nice as management, basic management. So, if you look on page two, this is where the question really comes in. So, one thing we're told constantly, and this ministerial comes from Mako trainings as well, Michelle Pugary, who is contracted by Mako, has done a number of HR trainings for us. I would say we've been to easily 20 HR trainings, and this is always dealt with, because if you look at the law and do a literal interpretation, you'll find that laws contradict each other left and right. So, when you look at page two and you see that we need to adhere to the rights of the public to participate, and that's why we ensure that, you know, documents are available and all of the things we do to follow that right, then there's the right to know, and then there's the right to privacy. So, if you honor an employee's right to privacy, you could argue you're violating somebody else's right to participate. And we know from the Mako trainings that, that that happens, and you have to take into intent. So, my question with the department head meetings, the other thing I wanted to bring out was MCA 742110, and you guys can look it up, I brought my law book with me if you want. That is, defines the county commissioners, board of county commissioners' job responsibility to supervise departments. So, with that also being in MCA, and then Harold Blatty was here a month or two ago, and said one commissioner has zero authority to do anything, you have to do everything as a team of three. Even if you have a two-one vote, you still have to do everything as a team of three. So, department head meetings, if we just have one commissioner attend, are we doing our job by MCA? Are we violating our job by MCA? Yeah. Can one commissioner do anything in those? No, we can't. So, I was wondering if, instead of dividing the commission, HR trainings by other counties have been done differently, and there is some precedent here for this as well, but if the meeting is an HR training, not a commission meeting, advertised and reminded and agended by HR or HR admin, not the commissioners, and the commissioners attend not as a commission, but as attendees, then we're able to do our job by MCA. And we're able to know as a team what's going on. The other thing with taking our department head meetings back to trainings is we offer protection to the county, because the two areas were hung out there, as you well know, as land use and personnel. Right now, we're not offering any trainings to our supervisors on how to manage their supervisees. By going back to trainings, we provide that. So, what do you guys think about this whole thing? Any thoughts? And if you want, we can also have department head updates to the commission, I think that would be smart. I don't think we get probably as much information, but really, those should be in full view of the public. One thing with the trainings that we used to do is we had a roundtable to start, it wasn't necessarily departmental update, but it was an opportunity for departments to update everybody on things they need to know. So, for example, the commission would update on why do we have a timestamp for claims? That was one of our updates. Recently, we had a rabies incident where a couple of departments didn't work together. Those are things that we can take care of in a roundtable prior to an official in-house HR training. So, thoughts, debate, input, questions? And here's that statute, and I don't think I included that if I did have a second sheet. And those HR trainings, we commissioners all free in the post as well. The beauty, too, with the HR trainings, a couple of years ago, Mark Lincoln, he was a brand-new supervisor, requested a series of trainings from Michelle. Another department head had requested a training on how to motivate employees, and then what we do is she had kept those two one hour, and then she broke them into part one, part two, part three. So, department heads were walking away from their hour with something in their back pocket to help them do their jobs. So were we, as commissioners.
Well, I guess the idea of these meetings, the whole idea was just to have an information exchange between department heads and elected officials, find out ways that we could help one another, which I think we did pretty good at.
I do, too. I think it was invaluable, and I think the timing was, couldn't have been better, I really do.
You know, if these meetings are open to the public, then that won't happen.
I agree.
That would be the end of that. So, so how, would you advertise the meetings in, or how would you, how would you?
An in-house training, we could certainly advertise, but we wouldn't have to because it's not a commission meeting, it's not a board meeting. It is ministerial, and it would be an HR training. It would be Michelle Edmonds' meeting, and again, it wouldn't be a meeting, it would be a training. I tend to use those words too loosely, but it would be not a meeting, but a training. So, yeah, we could certainly, or we could just have her call them and make sure that all our departments know they think they need a particular day, particular time, so that they can plan on that each week, and so that if somebody discovers a need in their department, that they have the ability and the time to contact Michelle and say, hey, if you haven't planned the next training, I really need one on discipline, or whatever. I mean, there's a list of like 30 items in HR that a person could have a training on. Michelle's got most of them already done, it's just a matter of bringing everybody together. And through those discussions, there's an opportunity for give and take, she doesn't just get up there and dictate, and that's why a training takes one, two, and three parts. She really does try and draw people out. Well, in that process, there's an opportunity for exchange as well. And so I think with what you have started, Darrell, with that information exchange, I think that could move us into a whole new training atmosphere of more open exchanges. And I think that would have to be an expectation and share with department heads, because we want this to continue.
Can we do that in an hour? A lot of times, I mean, we get going there, and we usually go over our hour for sure.
We do, we do.
We have almost every time.
I think that needs to be put to our department heads. One, is that okay with you guys, with your workload?
Yeah.
Two, Michelle, what do you think? In my opinion, it doesn't hurt to have the same topic over a three-month period. It doesn't hurt to have part one, part two, part three, is you do a little bit of review, you do your part two, next week you do a little bit of review of part one and two, and then three, it just helps to solidify it and gives people a chance, again, over that month, to formulate questions from what they learned. So, I think it'd be something we could talk to our department heads about, and ask them, do you want a 90-minute meeting? Does that work for you? Or do you want to keep it to an hour? And then, we can play by your, nothing says that we can't do things and change up.
Yeah, I could get some info from the department then.
Okay. And maybe ask Michelle to put that to them.
Sure.
Again, it shouldn't be a commission meeting.
Right.
It should be an HR meeting that we all attend. So, maybe put these questions to Michelle and ask her to reach out to everybody, we can give her the list of emails. And then, think about the second part and how we want to deal with that. I brought this with me, you guys are going to be going to training, and I'm going to guess that Dan Clark's going to be there. This, this book is called Courageous Collaboration with Gracious Space. A lot of people do not like the gracious space, it sounds really, you know, squishy and squeezy and sweet, nobody likes that. But the concept is exactly what Dan Clark did at the meeting, at the training last year. The idea of gracious space is defined, this is a book that, if you do Leadership Montana, that you go through and the whole year is spent on this book, Dan Clark probably has this memorized. This is where the idea of bringing the stranger to a meeting, invite the stranger comes in, and what you want to do is try and grab as many ideas as you can, so I brought Dan's visual aid. This is when you have two people, these are the two points of view that you get, one and two, when you invite the stranger, you invite all these other points of view for whatever your topic is. So, there's a two-sided street to gracious space, and this is something that a lot of people are grappling with, not just Broadwater County, and I understand it may be a part of your training. The counties and cities can invite the stranger and have as many inputs, as much input on any given subject as we can get, and that's what we strive to do. But when you have somebody who is in attendance, whose desire is not to propose a different point of view, but just to stop the process, to halt local government, to throw grenades, gracious space fails, because you got this side of the table trying to invite the stranger and engage in gracious space, and you got all these grenades flying at the commission or the city council that just want to bring local government to a halt. How do you jive the two? You can't, so it breaks. Then it goes back to, one of the things we did in our training last year, Cory bought everybody a book on leadership, and we went chapter by chapter every month. We didn't get through the whole thing, but the last chapter was, you're only as strong as your weakest link, need for team is essential right now in this era of local government. What you just said plays to both these things brilliantly. You've got to have a team, you've got to have gracious space, but it's so easy to throw grenades and blow the whole thing up. So, a little commentary that flies into, how do you jive, rights to participation, rights to privacy, and right to know, when you know that a person whose right to privacy is violated, what was the amount Great Falls paid that woman? $500,000. Which one of these carries the most weight? All of them. Or we could easily be on the hook, because those don't play fair or well at the playground. You violate one of those to make sure you insure the other two, and you're out on the limb. So, it's not easy, it's not one-dimensional, you can't use a literal interpretation, you've got to look at intent. What's our intent?
I think as long as we keep it as an HR training, we don't, we're not making any decisions at the meeting, it's simply a discussion, I think we should be okay.
I agree. Are you guys good with reaching out to Michelle and sharing with her this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. I did send her an email, I think on Friday, Wednesday maybe, I think it was Wednesday, and she was gone for Thanksgiving, so, who wants to reach out to Michelle?
I'll do it.
Okay. If you'd CC us so that we're aware of the conversation, that would be great. And you might include Michelle Beebe, because she was the one before that was sending out the reminders.
Okay.
As HR admin, she would be a strong, would probably be the coordinator for Michelle. And she and Michelle worked together. If you guys ever want to borrow this book, it's fabulous, it really is very good.
Was there anything else? Not in the journal at 11:10. Not within the adjournment at 11:10.